Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the APCD for May 12, 2020. And I, but before we call roll call, I'd like just to thank all the board members for joining us today with a Zoom and a regular APCD from your homes and also from your offices. As you know, this is due to the governor stay at home and also the county stay well at home process. So I want to thank you all for joining us today from, from your offices and also from your homes. And I also want to thank the public for, for tuning in and reading it as well. I also like to thank Lucky and your staff, our APCD board. I also like to thank Brendan and Lori from the clerk's office and, and also for setting up this meeting. And I'm sure it's going to be a successful meeting. And also, we also have Jeff Berg, our money person here with us today. And again, I also want to thank Jacqueline Smith, our assisting county consul. So with that in mind, I also, then I'd like to have a roll call.
Board member Bennett.
Supervisor Bennett's not going to be with us. He had another engagement.
Board member Blatz?
Here.
Board member Edmonds?
Here.
Board member Huber?
Here.
Board member Long?
Here.
Board member Parks? Board member Pollock?
Here.
Board member Ramirez?
I'm here and I'll be here till 2:00.
Board member Rollins? Board member Rollins? No. Chair Zaragoza?
Here.
And I think we have a quorum, right?
We have 11 members present.
Thank you, Lori. So we do have a quorum. So join me with the pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America.
The face of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, simple to be and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, item number three is the minutes of March 10th. Has everybody read the minutes? And if, if so, is there any concerns with the minutes? If not, like a motion?
I'll make the motion. This is Lynn.
I'll make the motion. This is David Pollock.
Lynn, okay, we have motion. Pollock second.
Moved by Lynn Edmonds, seconded by Dave Pollock.
Uh huh. And a roll call.
Board member Blatz? Board member Edmonds?
Yes, aye.
Board member Huber?
Yes.
Board member Long?
Yes.
Board member Parks? Board member Pollock?
Yes.
Board member Ramirez?
Yep.
Board member Rollins? No. Chair Zaragoza?
Yes. So that is...
We don't have, board member Blatz, is he not here?
Is he?
Yes.
Yes, there he goes.
So we do have a majority there.
Yes.
So that is already approved. So we have an approval. Thank you so much. And item number five is a review of the, and consider any approval by majority vote of the agenda or any revisions by board members. Is there any revisions that any of the board members like to share at this time?
No agenda review.
Okay, so then, so we need a motion for that, Lori?
No.
No, okay. Then item number six, public comments. I don't have any public comments.
And I am, I'm in the email for the clerk of the board and there are no public comments.
No public comments. And of course, you know, you had the opportunity to share that with the clerk, so we have none. Okay, item number seven, we have a board comments. Any board comments?
Stay safe, everybody.
Yes.
Me too.
Stay safe, good. Thank you. So no board comments. Thank you so much. Item number eight, this is APCD comments from, any comments?
Sure. I have a few remarks to make, Chair Zaragoza and members of the board. As I communicated to you in my, through my previous emails and status updates, the entire office is teleworking. We implemented our continuity of operations plans ever since the governor and the county declared the state of emergency on the stay at home directive. So roughly 85% of us, we are teleworking. Maybe 10% of us will show up to the headquarters. Our monitoring crew, for instance, will show up to the headquarters and also monitoring stations. And 5% of us, we are implementing a hybrid system. And we are basically implementing all our activities as we know them, from rule development to planning to emissions inventories. We continue to issuing our permits. We continue our enforcement and compliance visits. Of course, most of them are conducted remotely. And some of them, there'll be drive-bys, for instance. To the extent we can go and visit the facility without having a close interaction between our staff and the facility staff, we do conduct those visits. So we try to observe the physical distance directive. To the extent that we cannot do this, we postpone those inspections to later time. So I can confidently tell you that we are firing, if not in all eight cylinders, definitely in all six, perhaps even seven cylinders, which is pretty good under these circumstances. And a shout out to all my staff and thank you for the kind words in your opening remarks, supervisor. But a shout out to all my staff. Everybody stepped up to the plate ever since we implemented this plan and worked beautifully and I'm extremely proud of them. So, and I just want to make sure that I include that in the record. I think that as the county reopens, goes back to some level of normalcy, we'll follow suit, we'll coordinate with the county, we'll coordinate with the state. And definitely that return back will be a very gradual return. Definitely want to maintain our productivity and servicing our stakeholders, but we also want to make sure that our employees stay safe. So what you may potentially going to see is a gradual reduction, very phased reduction on the teleworking. Maybe instead of teleworking five days a week, maybe we'll telework one last day. We'll go for a period of time. We'll look at the numbers and if we continue making progress, maybe we can gradually reduce that. But we'll be very deliberate, very careful in scaling down and always maintaining the, the social distancing directive. So that's what, as far as the office is concerned. We also managed to meet with the air resources board while this whole thing was happening. And we talked about AB 617 and the community emissions toxic submission reporting regulation. We did submit to US EPA Region 9, the ambient air monitoring data for 2019. And we have also submitted to the air resources board our draft standard operating procedures, which was one of the last items remaining from their last TSA audit. And that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank you and your staff also for following the guidelines from the governor and also from the county, Dr. Levitt and also our CEO's office. And I'm sure you saw this morning, the, all the excellent work that our agencies are doing and Dr. Levitt and our CEO's office. And, and also the opportunity to assist, you know, the, the community with the COVID-19. And your staff is doing a good job and I'd like to commend you for that too. And, and also working from home, I think is extremely important. I think one of the things that the governor mentioned today was that if they, if the opportunity arises to work in the office, if, if individuals cannot work by tele, you know, work, you know, they can also then modify their offices and so forth.
Right.
So, but I want to thank you again for the excellent work. As I mentioned initially, it's really important that we all work together. And, and I think that Ventura County has really has an excellent work at work, excuse me, in following the COVID guidelines from, from the governor and the county. So thank you for, for your report.
You're welcome and thank you.
Okay, so that was number eight, but now the number nine is probably going to add additional information. This is receiving file the county air pollution control district continuity of operations plan.
So I'm not going to belabor the issue, but it was almost a week prior to the governor declaring the stay at home directive. And we could see the writing on the wall that something like this was coming. And we quickly realized the agency did not have a continued of operations plan. So we put our heads together and put something together for in less than a week. We took our staff members' feedback as well. And we set that coop or the continuity of operations plan into effect in March 18. And our goal was, and basically through the plan, it had three stages. And we were trying to figure out techniques to implement the social distancing, depending on the severity of the emergency. And essentially, we're trying to figure out how to telework, you know, not on an individual basis, but as a group.
As a team.
As a team. And we didn't have experience in a mass scale like that. So our goal was to set in effect, perhaps start the teleworking with two days a week, get our feet wet and then increase it gradually. Well, that evening, the governor declared, you know, the stay at home directive. And in a hurry, we had to increase from two days a week to full week telecommuting. But it worked beautifully. The plan was put together not necessarily for this epidemic, but also for other emergencies like earthquakes.
Fires.
Fires, exactly. And it's supposed to be a dynamic plan, not a static plan and reflect lessons learned. So periodically, we'll be updating it. But at least, and I had communicated the existence of the plan and its implementation again to you all through my previous communications, but I never shared the actual plan language. So now formally, officially, you have it there. If you want to spend some time and read through it, please do so. So this is every seven file.
So board members, do you have any questions? Any board members, any questions or concerns?
Nope. Just well done.
Okay, that was a well done for...
Edmonds.
Edmonds, thank you so much.
Yes.
And thank you.
Chair Zaragoza, Linda Parks is here now. Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, receive a file, motion to receive.
Okay, this is a receiving file. Okay. Thank you. And item number 10 is...
I think we need a motion.
On the, on item... Need a motion for that?
On item number 10, we do need a motion. Let me tell you what it is all about.
But nine, we don't need a motion?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so 10, 10 would be the adoption of resolution authorizing the pay for employees pursuant to section 1804 of the Ventura County Personal Rules and Rig, and this is due to the COVID-19.
Correct. You may recall supervisor, Chair Zaragoza and members of the board, the county board of supervisors did approve 80 hours of paid leave back in April. And just a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was April 21st, they approved another 40 hours paid leave for those employees who cannot telework, who cannot be assigned work, and they have bona fide reason, COVID-19 related reason to stay at home. In order to extend the same benefits to our employee, technically, the same benefit that has been approved by the county board of supervisors has to be approved by this board. And that's what this resolution does. We don't know whether anyone would be interested in taking advantage of this provision. They did not, none of my staff took advantage of the previous 80 hours. But it will be good for us to have it just in case.
It's there.
Maybe needing it. Yes.
Okay. Okay, any questions of the, any questions commissioners?
I'll move the recommended action. It's Carmen.
Huber, second.
Okay, Carmen has made the motion. Who makes the second? Huber?
Bob Huber.
Bob, second, but Huber?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Board member Blatz?
Yes.
Board member Edmonds?
Yes.
Board member Huber?
Yes.
Board member Long?
Yes.
Board member Parks?
Yes.
Board member Pollock?
Yes.
Board member Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Zaragoza?
Yes. And again, thank you so much. Again, you know, we follow the rules that the county has. And thank you so much. Absolutely. Okay, item 11 is approval of the grant funding of 19,0996 to lower emissions school bus program project involving the Oxnard School District, the authorization auditor controller to process the necessary imaginary transactions.
Yes, supervisor.
Mr. Chair, this is David Pollock. I will need to abstain on items 11 and 12. Reason is my private practice. I'm on retainer with a company that does business with school districts, so I will be abstaining.
Okay, so Pollock's abstention. Okay, thank you, sir.
So in the past, we have worked with a number of school districts and helped mount to purchase cleaner, lower emitting buses, CNG buses. And those last quite some time. With the caveat, their high pressure CNG fueling tanks pursuant to the California Highway Patrol regulations have to be replaced every 15 years. So through this action, we are assisting the Oxnard School District to replace four of their older tanks with newer ones. And we are reimbursing for their expenses.
And this is the elementary school district?
Yes.
Okay.
So through this action, you are authorizing me to enter into contractual agreement and our auditor to enter into the necessary accounting transactions.
Okay, any, any questions, electing? Board members? No questions?
I will move to approve.
Edmonds.
Huber, second.
And Huber, second?
And Lynn, Lynn Edmonds was the...
First, okay. Roll call.
Board member Blatz?
Yes.
Board member Edmonds?
Yes.
Board member Huber?
Yes.
Board member Long?
Yes.
Board member Parks?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain. Board member Pollock. Board member Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Zaragoza?
Yes. And this is going to really help the school district. Thank you so much. Item 12 is approval of six grant funding requests totaling $1.7 million for a new air quality project under the Community Air Protection Program.
We are...
A lot of money.
It's a lot of money, but we are very excited about this project. So we received some grant monies from the Community Air Protection Program under AB 617. And that money has to be invested on our underprivileged and low income communities. So we work with our school districts, three of our school districts, Moore Park, Ventura School Districts and Ocean View School District in, in Oxnard. And we are going to help these three school districts to purchase four, replace four diesel buses, school buses with four electric, full electric school buses. And we are also going to be helping them with their electric vehicle fuel charging infrastructure. So we developed a new grant agreement that we are seeking authorization of. And also you to authorize me to enter into the contracts with those three districts in the amount, as you mentioned, of $1,752,000. And also authorize our auditor controller's office to enter into the necessary accounting transactions.
Look, I am also a member of the Gold Coast Transit District. And one of the requirements that the state is looking now and the feds are looking at is that most of all, the buses are going to be electric.
Yes.
In the near future, well, near and long-term future. Is that part of the school districts also that they're mandated to go electric?
They are not mandated. They are, we have helped them in the past with cleaner buses, going from diesel perhaps to CNG, but there is no mandate for electric buses yet because they are a lot more expensive. But through this grant, we have the ability to help them. I mean, there is practically no cost to them or very little cost. And by helping them with the EV fueling infrastructure, refueling infrastructure, we hope that we can convince them to go electric with their future purchases.
Yeah, I know, I know Gold Coast Transit, you know, there's a, there's a plan, you know, to phase, you know, for the CNG to electric, you know.
Correct.
And with the infrastructure to go with it. Board members, any, any questions of electing?
Nope.
I'll move to approve. This is Carmen.
Second, Huber.
First by, who is it?
Ramirez.
Ramirez and second by?
Huber.
By Huber?
Yes.
Okay, a roll call.
Board member Blatz?
Yes.
Board member Edmonds?
Yes.
Board member Huber?
Yes.
Board member Long?
Yes.
Board member Parks? Board member Parks?
Yes.
Board member Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Zaragoza?
Yes. And again, you know, I, I believe this is a future that most buses are going to be going, going to be going electric, you know.
And I think it's by far one of the best investments to help out our children.
In fact, my understanding is the city of LA, the MTA is going to 100 electric buses.
With a transit fleet, right?
Transit, yes. Anyway, thank you. Our next item is 13 is receiving file the status report of the Ventura County Air Quality Analysis during COVID-19.
Okay, so I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
If we can bring it up.
No PowerPoint?
Yes. So it was, I can't remember, maybe a month, a month and a half ago, that Supervisor Parks had asked us, well, with this COVID-19, we see a lot fewer cars on the, on our freeways. We read a lot of press articles about cleaner air in China, in Europe. How about here in Ventura? Is our air getting cleaner? And no. So the short response was, well, it's a valid question, but a very tricky answer because it's not trivial whether the air is getting cleaner or not. But we did an analysis that I want to share with you. So certainly things are getting better. So the governor had, I'm going to turn this away. So the governor had declared his stay at home order back in March 19, I believe, when was it? And we certainly are experiencing reduced traffic with respect to cars and trucks, even though there is still some truck trafficking due to the supply chain and they are still continuing with the deliveries. But certainly, there's a lot less traffic. There should be a lot less emissions. Can we see an air quality improvement and do our data support that expectation? So let's see. Oh, there it is. So before I dive into the details, you know, some tutorial, air quality 101. So we looked at the ozone and find particulate pollution because these are the two criteria pollutants that we, we monitor. And for ozone, probably you have seen the slide before. In order for ozone to form, you need the two ingredients. NOx emissions, which stands for oxidants of nitrogen, that are released from cars, trucks and other combustion sources such as power plants. And VOCs, which stands for volatile organic compounds or hydrocarbons, which are released from paint, solvents, and also from our vehicles and, and other stationary sources. So those two combine and under the presence of sunlight, they cook and they produce ozone. So we need not only those two ingredients, but also we need the heat and the sunlight. If those are emitted during the evening, there is no ozone formation. The moment the, the sun has to shine in order for the reaction to take place. Also, the warmer the temperature, for the same amount of pollutants, the higher the ozone formation. That's why, and the lower is the temperature, the reverse. That's why you see higher ozone figures during summer times when the temperature is higher and lower ozone formation during winter times and springtime when the temperatures are lower, cooler. So by definition, March and April happen to be our cleanest months of the year, regardless of COVID-19 or not. And the next big variable is weather has a tremendous impact on the formation, on whether ozone will be formed or not. And typically, spring weather is conducive to good air quality because, A, the temperatures are lower. Second, we have fewer hours of sunlight compared to what we have summertime. We have cloudy skies, sometimes rain, and much better atmospheric mixing instead of the stagnant air conditions that we experienced during summertime. So regardless again, whether there was more or less traffic on our freeways, we expect to see better air quality during March and April of the year.
But before you continue, I'm, I'm notice on, in the news that the city of LA, the city of New York.
Yes.
And, and big cities like in China and so forth, that air is cleaner because of less traffic.
That's right. That's right. There is traffic. And it's a lot easier to determine the improvement because their baseline is so high. Their air is so dirty. So any improvement and substantive reduction in vehicular traffic translate to a huge air quality improvement. But our air here in Ventura is a lot cleaner.
A lot cleaner.
So our baseline is a lot lower. So whatever difference we are going to see, it's going to be a lot smaller. But we want to see whether we are going to see it. So we have, as you know, five monitoring stations. So we thought perhaps we can zoom in to the station where we registered the highest ambient ozone concentration. And that happens to be the, the monitoring station in Simi Valley. So we use Simi Valley as our test case to see whether we are going to be able to see any improvement. So let's look at the temperatures, which is a major variable. So as you can see, the yellow curve on top, let's see, is the...
The middle.
Oops, oh, oops. Let's see, let's go back. So the yellow one reflects, we averaged the average temperature of the last five years. And the blue one is the temperature that we have experienced this year. And we are plotting. We started from March 1st all the way to April 30th. And the red vertical line is when the governor declared the stay at home order. So as you can tell, in both, in the before the stay at home order, the temperatures typically were lower than what we experienced in the last five years. And that continued all the way through the end of April. As we enter the last week of April, on April 25th, we experienced a heat wave. So the temperature shot up. But for the majority of the two-month period, the temperature this year was lower than what it was on average during the last five years. So one would anticipate better air quality regardless. So then we look at the climatology and meteorological conditions. And guess what? When you compare the last five years, the number of days of rain that we had, in March, we had five, but this year we had 12 days. In April, we had only one in the last five years on average, and this year we had seven. And when you look at the precipitation, in the last five years, we had slightly less than two inches of rain in March and almost nothing in April. And in 2020, we almost had five inches of rain in April and almost... And in 2020, we almost had five inches of rain in April and almost two and a half in, uh, uh, in, in April.
Significantly.
So significantly wetter, uh, winter this year and cooler temperatures. And again, that too should contribute to the cleaner air that hopefully we are going to see. So anecdotally, uh, we are tempted to say, uh, yes, the air was cleaner. We have been reading the press articles. I have been traveling on the L.A. freeways when I go home during the weekends, and I can tell you visibility has improved tremendously during those days. So we analyzed, uh, our actual monitoring, uh, data for the month of March and April, and this is what we found. First, with respect to the NOx emissions, because these are the emissions directly emitted, uh, from the motor vehicles. So if we have fewer motor vehicles traversing our freeways, we should see, you know, lesser amount of those emissions. And as you can see, in the before timeframe, uh, the yellow line, again, the yellow curve is the five-year average, what we see in the last five years. And the blue one is the NOx, ambient NOx concentrations, um, uh, indicated here with the blue curve. So in the before, we are still slightly below the yellows, but as we cross over, uh, the stay-at-home directive timeframe, uh, you can totally see the blue curve staying consistently below the yellow, which indicates, reflects the fact that there are lesser amounts of NOx emissions up until we hit that, uh, heat wave.
Okay.
And you may recall during the heat wave, people started getting stir-crazy and started driving a lot more, right?
Right.
Well, guess what? We started seeing it in emissions.
You can see it there.
Where they started climbing up, and in fact, there is very little difference between the last five years and what we were experiencing during that heat wave week.
So you think that's going to increase now that?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Right.
Yes, we are moving in that direction. So let's look at the ozone, what kind of ozone did we experience with the reduced NOx emissions? So you look at the, uh, before, uh, the stay-at-home order. Again, the yellow one is the average ozone concentrations of the last five years, and the blue one is, uh, the ozone concentration this year. For sure, in the before timeframe, we're staying below for most, uh, most of the time. And we continue staying below, uh, our ozone readings, consistently staying below what we experienced in the last five years, except and until we hit that heat wave and people started driving, uh, and we hit, we hit those two spikes. Now, for the most part, you know, uh, our ozone air quality was better except that very last week of, uh, April.
And now we're, now we're going to have shopping centers going to be open, you know, for pickup and so forth, according to Governor's, uh, report this morning. So that's, that's probably going to.
That's, uh, yeah, that's going to work against us, but it is what it is. So we also looked at the air quality index, which is, um, uh, a metric that was, uh, designed for the, uh, uh, for the average stakeholder. And basically, uh, the unit of hundred reflects, uh, to the federal eight-hour ozone standard. And as you can tell, in the before the stay-at-home directive, the blue curve, which reflects the AQI for this current year versus the yellow, which reflects the average AQI of the last five years, we are consistently lower both in the before and after timeframes, except, uh, and until, up until the very last week of April, where you start seeing those two blue spikes, you know, that, uh, uh, reflects, uh, the heat wave. In terms of ozone exceedances, normally, uh, our ozone season starts in April and goes through October, and in November, oops, uh, sorry. In November, December, January, February, and March, we have no exceedances. The temperatures are too low for the ozone reaction to take place. April is our transitional month, transition month. And typically, as you can see, we'll have an exceedance anything from one day to maybe four days, and then those exceedances peak up as, um, uh, we enter June, July.
July and August.
Right. But for this April, we had no exceedance, uh, um, for Ventura County. So, uh, that works to our benefit. So in terms of PM 2.5, PM 2.5 is very, very much related to, uh, the NOx emissions. And actually, the NOx emissions affect, um, uh, roughly 15, 20 to 25% of the PM 2.5 readings because the aerosolize, they, uh, convert to ammonium nitrates, um, and which is a component of PM 2.5 that is breathable. And, um, because of the lower, uh, NOx emissions, we see our PM 2.5s, uh, also to be lower in the before. And certainly in the after, uh, timeframes, up until we hit that heat wave and the higher NOx concentrations contributed to higher PM 2.5 readings. So, uh, this is another visual. We plotted here the air quality index for the last five years for the months of March and April. And again, uh, uh, for the most part, green means, um, good air quality. Yellow is the moderate air quality, and the orange stays for, stands for unhealthy for sensitive groups. And then you go into the reds and purple zones, which is the unhealthy and bad air quality. But in the months of March and April, we don't have those.
So generally, we have some really good weather.
Generally speaking, we have very good air quality. If you look at, uh, the year 2015, we have green, some yellows.
Yes.
And maybe some oranges, but not too many of them. As you progressively go down the line, uh, our, oops, our air quality is getting cleaner and cleaner.
2020 looks real good.
And you look at 2020, for the month of, uh, uh, of March, we are green all the way through. And even for the month of April, the green color dominates. We have some yellows, but definitely this year, we had a much better air quality for the two months of March and April. So, um, so, and that slide basically, you know, summarized what we just said. April is the transition month, uh, and then our analysis shows that we had better air quality due to weather, uh, during March of April, but also the reduced traffic has contributed to, uh, uh, our improved air quality. And, uh, definitely the Simi, the air quality in Simi Valley has worsened in the last week of, uh, April due to, uh, the heat wave that we experienced.
But prior to that, they had pretty good weather then.
Right, 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 right. So, um, uh, I asked staff, well, can we do, um, a case study? Can we find another day similar to what we experienced in the last week of April in years past? And do the side-by-side comparison, just to see whether our reduced traffic, whether it's contributing to lesser or higher, uh, ozone concentrations? And my last year's, um, meteorologist, Laura Hedgeson, uh, her boss, uh, Mr. Ham, who is here with us, uh, they did a fantastic detective work, and they were able to isolate one day two years back. And basically, we are comparing the April 25th of this year to April 10
Fifteenth.
2018, almost identical meteorological conditions. Strong high-pressure system, very stagnant, um, weather conditions. High temperatures, 92 this year, 90 in 2018. Wind direction is southwest, same wind direction, you know, in both days. Wind speeds eight miles per hour with 15 miles per hour gusts in both days, almost identical. And yet, look at the NOx, uh, concentrations. In 2018, the one-hour, uh, highest concentration peaked at 60 parts per billion, 60 ppb, while this year, we only picked up to 7 ppb because of the reduced.
So, so for the layperson, that's really good.
That's very good. Uh, this is a concentration, it stands for parts per billion. It says how many NOx molecules are out there at a unit volume. So definitely the reduced traffic is, uh, improving.
And I think Edmondson, somebody had a question? No? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, so let's see what kind of ozone we are going to end up with because everything else is almost identical in this day. So, and look at this. In 2018, the ozone concentration shot up to 76 parts per billion, which was a federal exceedance. 70 parts per billion is the federal standard, and we exceeded the standard. This year, because of the reduced concentration, we only picked up to 66 part per billion, and it was not a federal exceedance.
Fantastic.
So that definitely helps, uh, the overall situation. So overall, that, uh, uh, March and April, as I said, uh, they are typically cleaner months of the year, and specifically this year, they were especially cleaner because of both weather, but also because of reduced traffic. And for days during the heat wave, um, where we would expect, um, the concentration to shut up above the federal standards, we managed to stay below the standard thanks to the reduced, uh, uh, NOx emissions due to the reduced traffic. And that concludes, uh.
Excellent presentation. Supervisor Parks, uh, whereas, does that, where Supervisor Parks, what do you think?
I, I really appreciate the, uh, presentation and the review. It looks like we had two things for us, both the weather and then, uh, reduced, uh, emissions. And you realize that transportation emissions are the number one emissions in our state and how important it is that, um, we do all we can to limit those. One thing I, if I may, Darren Kettle, the exec, uh, executive director for the Ventura County Transportation Commission, wrote an op-ed that was really good. He pointed out that, uh, right now we're seeing, you know, so much less traffic starting to build now, but, uh, that has reduced significantly the pollution. But he pointed out that if we all just telecommuted one day a week after everything gets back and going, we would have 20% less pollution. And you think about how much we do, uh, to reduce pollution. Uh, a lot of that's really expensive, but just that we've become so familiar now with telecommuting, I'm hoping that a lot of people and companies will decide that that is the money for them, and we can reduce traffic and pollution, which is, uh, significant.
Yes. Yes, Supervisor, I totally agree with the sentiment and with the logic behind it. It certainly will help tremendously, and perhaps it is by far, uh, the least costly approach to, uh, uh, to improve air quality for our respective regions because, uh, there's practically no cost to it, if you think about it. If we can perform and remain productive, uh, this is by far the best way. Doesn't require us to install any expensive air pollution control device or anything, and we get the 20% benefit right from the get-go.
Can I ask you one quick thing in that maybe, uh?
To put another lane onto the freeway, you know? How expensive is that to put a whole lane on the freeway, which is being proposed on the 101? 20% boost off the top if we all just commute once a week, uh, on, on our telecommutes.
That'll make a difference.
Correct.
Uh, I'm sure that, I just want to ask a question. I'm not sure if, uh, Vice Chair Blatz has anything to say, but Ohio also gets, uh, some not-too-good weather.
Right.
Is that right, Brian?
Uh, well, you know, the weather must be somewhat nice because everybody's in the swi, everybody in the entire state are in the swimming holes up here every weekend right now. But, uh, it is, it is pretty true, the, uh, we, it gets really hot up here, which is partly why we have ozone production in the valley because it gets a lot hotter on average than, uh, other parts of the county. And then we have very stagnant air because the valley pretty much traps it. It doesn't go anywhere.
Okay, any additional questions on, uh, excellent presentation, you know?
Thank you, Lucky. I know, uh, I, I'm, the, you know, breaking down those numbers, I think the rough number I was looking at is it's about 10 times a reduction roughly, um, that we're seeing with, uh, with the people, you know, not in their cars. That's a huge, uh, that's a huge reduction in the NOx alone, about 10 times as much.
Correct.
That's really, really good. So we need some more rain and, and, and not the other thing.
Right.
Okay, so that's the receiving files, so we, no hold on that right now?
Correct.
Okay. Our next item, item 14 is receiving filed a comprehensive audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. Really good so far.
Yes, Supervisor, uh, we are very happy. We received our comprehensive audit report and, uh, single audit report. And both reports came back to us, uh, without any, uh, material findings or any significant findings. And, uh, as an, as the executive officer, when I read a report with clean bill, that offers you a clean bill of health, um, uh, I get elated. And, um, we sent this report to, uh, you under a separate cover. Uh, i- i- it's, uh, really good news for the agency.
I, I love it. Jeff really, Lucky's smiling out there, I can see. I, I thank the staff, you know, for an excellent job. You know, I think it's really important, you know, to come out with a, a clean report as such, you know, so. Okay, that's also rece, any questions? Any questions, board members? Okay, that's a very, very good report. Thank you so much. Uh, item 15 is the receiving filed a status report regarding the air pollution control district application for section 103 gray from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency.
This is the last item in our agenda, and this is just to let you, uh, board members, know that we did apply for a small grant to, uh, US EPA to assist us with our fine particulate monitoring network. And, um, hopefully we'll have good news to share with you in the following months. But this is just, uh, an FYI that we did submit the application that we, as we had promised.
Any questions on that last item, board members? Okay, yes. Okay, thank you. I, I also want to share that, uh, before we adjourn, that, uh, we're going to have two budget hearings in June.
Yes.
And you might want to share a little bit of that so, so the board can be prepped for that.
Absolutely. So we are going to have, uh, two hearings on our budget, uh, June 9th and June 23rd. You can pencil that in to your calendars, uh, pursuant to the Health and Safety Code. We have to hold these two hearings.
We have to, we have to.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, any questions?
And it's going to be in the usual timeframe at 1:30 or 30.
Yes. Okay, with that in mind, I want to thank you for an excellent presentation and thank everybody for staying at home or offices and, and I hope you guys had a good Mother's Day. I know, you know, I, my mom passed away a couple of years ago, but my wife is not my mom, so thank you, Mary Ellen. And my condolences to, to your mom.
Thank you.
I, I know Lucky just lost your mom about a couple of days ago.
Last week.
My condolences, you know, on behalf of the board, on behalf of all of us.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
So we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, be safe.
Thank you.